Good evening, and I'd like to convene the Work Session Business Meeting of January 9th, 2020 of the Putnam Valley Board of Education. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first board meeting of the new decade, very exciting. 2020 is not yet rolling off my tongue. We're going to move around, well, actually, I think I will start with a resolution to approve the minutes of the business meeting of December 12th, 2019, and the special meeting of January 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to inform everyone that the Treasurers Report for September and October 2019 are now available in the business office. And now, we're going to move around our agenda, and I'd like to move next to our student report.
We just held our first annual winter homecoming at the high school. We had a series of dress-up days, like Spirit Week with Color Wars, except on the Thursday afternoon, we held our pep rally. It was a shoot-off between staff and students. The students had won, of course. And overall, I would say it was a very success, it was a great success, and the students really loved it.
So with the new year, we also have a new schedule change with the seniors leaving approximately four minutes earlier. I know so far, everyone's very happy about that, the senior can get out without having any issues with traffic and not having to rush to leave the building. We also scheduled a hypnotist to perform in March. The tickets are going to be $10 each, and we're also looking for other things to perform in front of all the students.
So now, I'd like a resolution to convene an executive session of the Board of Education for the matter of, I'm sorry, I have to say the exact wording. Employment history of one particular person, after which time we will reconvene the regular business work session. Thank you very much.
Second.
Oh, second. All in questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you in a few minutes. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. We now like to go into the regular presentations for the Work Session Business Meeting of January 9th, 2019, and I believe we're starting with our very first budget discussion. What would you like to do?
So our first presentation will be given by Michael Lee, our network administrator and CIO, and he's going to talk about technology and CIO and data privacy and a lot of other good stuff. First, it'll be sort of a recap of the year, and then look forward for what to expect next year. So, thank you, Michael.
Well, I'm Mike Lee. I'm the CIO here, and this is the technology budget presentation. Now, G Suite. Our work with G Suite is ongoing, and it's been highly successful, thanks to the hard work of basically everyone, but especially Dan here, who is basically our G Suite G-man. So as you can see from this list, we do a lot with G Suite. Staff training and integration, those are the things we use it for, and students. But what has G Suite done for us this year? G Suite has improved and streamlined a lot of our internal processes. We've got a new request and approval system for clubs and stipend positions. We've streamlined the field trip request and planning systems, and that's been deployed to all the buildings now, with over 40 field trips planned using that system. And about to be deployed, we've got a new centralized request approval process that was, that's been designed from the ground up to be expandable. Now, what does this mean? It means that if we've got something that needs to be requested and then approved, we could just easily add it. Food for meetings, videography requests, anything, we just create the request, and it goes, all goes through the same approval system. Now, what else? G Suite in the classroom and beyond. Over 500 Google classrooms have been created so far this year, with over 15,000 posts by teachers. Now, they use that from, anything from internal professional development to day-to-day activities like homeworks and do-nos, and, you know, even clubs and sports and other activities, they use it for centralized communications, because it's such a great tool to bring everyone together, that they could use it to, like I just said, centralized communications and distribute their handouts. Now, look at these statistics. These are some pretty big numbers. Now, what do you see? You see a lot of documents being created, but what else do you see? If you look a little closer, what do you see? You see a lot of documents being shared. Now, that's a lot of collaboration, and that's what G Suite does for us. We're creating a lot, but we're also sharing a lot more. G Suite improves our parent communications. One example is, at the high school, we've got a new automated course drop notification form. So what this does is, the guidance counselor, once they meet with a student, they fill out this form, and once they're done filling out the form, the system automatically generates an email and sends it out to the teacher, and sends it to the parents with the reason for the drop, and then this encourages conversations with the kids, with the teachers, with the parents, about if this is something that the kid really wants to do. And the parents, we make it super easy for them to get back to the guidance department, because once they get this email, all they have to do is hit reply, and that email, an email gets, you know, sent right back to the, to the guidance department. So you don't have to think, like, who do I have to contact? You just hit reply. Now, our Chromebook integration is also ongoing. This year, we've got Chromebooks in the 5th, 6th, and 7th grade. Again, the feedback is always, they're extremely easy to use, fewer distractions, student work is always in one place and safe, and it's a consistent experience across all their devices. Now, for next year, we're going to expand this integration to the 8th grade, which will make the middle school entirely on the Chromebooks. This year, we also had a couple security enhancements. One big security enhancement is now the elementary school has, or they will be getting this year, VoIP phones. We just finished the wiring to each of the classrooms, so now each of the classrooms will have these hot-tech phones, and we'll be integrating these phones, like the other VoIP phones in the district, with our district-wide security and notification system. The VoIP phones, you could currently use them now to dial in a code, and that could lock down the building. You could, you know, actually physically lock the doors. We also rolled out a radio to PA integration, so if you had a radio, you could tune it to a certain channel, and then you could speak over the PA systems. We expanded our network out to the high fields pump station and the football field and softball field. Now, you may be wondering, well, why do we want to have access out to the high fields pump station? Well, when things go wrong there now, Brian Mansfield gets a message on his phone saying that something's wrong, you know, instead of waiting for a call or, you know, something like that. So now, out on the football field, and even further, the softball field, we've got our Wi-Fi network as well. We've enhanced the network in the gym, in the high school gym, and we're currently starting the wiring for a self-contained network for the PAC's new lighting system.
Mike, I have a question.
Yes.
Are those enhancements as a result of the SmartBond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, data privacy and security. This is a big topic. These are some of the things that we're doing, not all. This is kind of what we're comfortable with sharing over the internet. We've got Cisco Next Generation Firewalls, and every day, these systems send me a report as to what's going on on our network, all the types of traffic that's going through it, in it and out of it. We use Cisco AMP, which is Advanced Malware Protection, and this is basically like, like crowdsourced intelligence. So if you think about that for a second, what this means is, so we're a school, right? And suppose we don't see a certain threat, but another school district out there in California, or Idaho, or Oregon, whomever, who might also be using the system, they do see a threat. What happens is Cisco flags that, and then they reach out to all the other systems using Cisco AMP and says, this is a threat, let me protect you against that as well. So it looks at all the threats going on, you know, worldwide, and then updates our system. We do cybersecurity training every year. This is basically like, don't click on spam, which may seem a little basic, and, but it's not, because spam is actually the number-one way people could get into your network. That's the number-one way malware gets into your network. So by training people, don't click on spam, and it's working. It's working, by the way, because I get emails, like, I just got this email, should I be concerned? And so people are reporting these spam emails.
Mike, does that include phishing too?
Phishing, yes. Phishing and spam emails, yes. And we're ensuring that the district and vendors are compliant with ED Law 2D, that's unauthorized release of personally identifiable information. The really nice thing with getting software through Bosse's is that they ensure that the vendors that we use are compliant with this. As a data protection and privacy officer, I'm currently attending, and I just had the first session today, 10 three-hour NIST workshops, that's National Institute for Standards and Technology workshops at PNW Bosse's, and what we're basically doing there in these 10 sessions is we're creating a district profile, and what that profile is, is what our, you know, current state is, or our exposure is regarding data privacy and security, and we're going to build the documents to help us with identifying, protect, detect, respond, and recover, which is called the NIST Core. So by the end of these sessions, we'll have that document. So looking forward, what trends do I see out there? I see a lot more. More what? I see a lot more collaboration happening, a lot more interactive, interactivity, like augmented reality, or even devices with multi-touch, right? Like, why have one device in the front of the classroom with multi-touch when you could have 20 devices in the kids' hands with multi-touch, right? Or gamification of education. Now, what do I mean by that? See, I've got some personal examples here. My kids, I've got two third graders, and what they're doing in the third grade class is they're doing math minutes, and it's kind of like this online thing that they play, and if they get a certain number of math questions right in one minute, their teacher buys them ice cream. So they kind of create, they kind of made a game out of, out of doing math minutes. Now, classrooms everywhere are getting more connected. Why are they getting more connected? Well, because of programs like the Smart Schools Bond, right? The schools using the money to upgrade their, their networks, and everyone's getting more connected. So the system now, the system is the network. Not too long ago, the system was like, how many servers do you have? What kind of horsepower do you have in your district? And everyone was looking to your server room for all your services. But now, what everyone needs to make more robust is the network, because everyone is now looking out. We're all getting services, hosted services from elsewhere, and we're pulling all that information back in. And so with Smart Schools, we did that. What we did was, we upgraded all of our infrastructure to meet future connectivity needs. Now, what's going on in classrooms right now? This is a pretty cool project. The project was design, build, and test your ATV track, with the question, how could we design a challenging obstacle course for the 2018 Hess Truck ATV? What was cool about this project is the kids went out to the trail, and they, they tried to see what kind of terrain would be great for an ATV, and then they went back to the classrooms, and they had to measure, they had to cut, and they had to build obstacle courses for their Hess truck. Designing creates something that fulfills a need. If you could see behind these two students is a 3D printer. So what they did was, using Tinkercad, they created, student on the left created a working crochet hook, and student on the right created a dog tag for her puppy. Now, this one, all right. Invent, code, design, and create with Makey Makey. What did this student do? I'm just going to read this. Using the engineering-by-design process, students brainstorm, research, create, build, test, and present a new project and innovation. What is this student doing? This student, using Makey Makey, used Jell-O, which is apparently a conductor, to make a piano keyboard. She's using Jell-O as the piano keyboard. How cool is that? All right. So staffing. Staffing is exactly the same next year as would be this year. So it's one of me, one of Dan, four district computer tech specialists, and then two techs from Bosse's, but that only equals one FTE, because they basically split the time. And this is all, these are all the devices that we support. This is our general overview of expenses. You see, it's a lot of network and server support agreements, staff attendance, professional development, state reporting, test scoring, finance systems, and all the typical supplies that we need for schools. Now, as I said before, the Chromebooks, we're going to, we're going to buy one grade level now, and that would be for the 8th grade, but you'll notice that there's no purchase of laptops, because what we're going to do is, we're going to take the current 8th grade laptops and push them into the 9th grade, so then the middle school will be all Chromebook, and then the high school would have the MacBooks. But then what this allows us to do is use the money that we would normally spend on the laptops and use that for the new construction and renovation projects, equipments, like the network infrastructure, security and access control, and anything else we may need for the offices and classrooms and such. These are some of the financial details. Bosse's IPA, $250,000, would only have a budget impact of $56,000. With the aid ratio of 65%, each Chromebook basically comes out to $101. Thanks. Any questions?
So, once the middle school is all Chromebooks, but, but high school is still going to be MacBooks even into the future, because they're different, they can do different things, more things?
They could do different things, yeah. I'm currently evaluating with some, with some high school teachers, what the Chromebooks are good at and what the MacBooks are good at.
Okay.
So moving forward, I do see the Chromebooks go moving into the high school, but we still have to determine, like, at what level they will, they will push into the high school.
Okay.
I mean, I think the reality of that situation is, is when we talk to our students and ask our students how they utilize their MacBooks and what they do on their MacBooks, for the most part, they're accessing Google, and that's what they're doing. So we're taking a $1,200 device to access Google as opposed to a $101 device after aid.
Right.
And that's the real cost that we have to consider between the two. Obviously, the MacBook is a far superior device, but if we're not utilizing those tools, then it's probably not worth the investment. But we're still seeing, we're trying to decide what the right tool is at the right level. There may be a possibility of needing to purchase MacBooks for specialty classes, the arts, the music, classes that are utilizing those advanced features that are part of the MacBooks, and then maybe assigning Chromebooks for students for their daily use, because what they're really doing is accessing the internet and using our Google Suite.
I do have concerns about the training of what students will be going into in their next steps after leaving Putnam Valley as to, going into the business world, they're going to most business operations, it's going to be not Chromebooks that they're going to be dealing with. They're going to be dealing with Lenovo, or they're going to be dealing with Acer, or regular laptops, or MacBooks in those situations. And I, you know, I understand right now, they're mostly using it for the Google research and getting access to internal things. I just wonder about our role in kind of training the generation to use a real computer, as opposed to an internet device, because, you know, you could say that a Chromebook is essentially a phone on steroids. Yeah, so I'm, you know, I understand that the cost-benefit piece, I just wonder about next steps, because we've got to, we're also remembering to, reminding to train for life beyond the walls of this building.
Right. That's certainly part of the discussion, and I know that a lot of companies in the corporate world are using now extensively G Suite as well, so at least, you know, we've got that part going, so, yeah.
Can you go back to the VoIP phone system?
Yes.
Thing? Splain? Whatever you call it.
This one, yeah.
Okay, so, how, this is going to be in all, all three buildings?
Yeah.
Right? And how do, how do you ensure that the lockdown or the radio to PA is appropriately, is accessible when it's needed, but it cannot be misappropriated when, by students or?
We've been, we've actually been testing that pretty, pretty extensively this year on the high school and middle school campuses. Initially, I mean, you're right, like, when we first rolled it out on this campus, there were, there were some unintended activations, but I think we've gotten much better with that.
Okay.
And it's, it seems to be working really well on this campus now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's basically just training and getting people to not?
Yes.
Think it's a toy?
Yeah, I mean, our, our security consultants and the people we speak to, it's, it's important in the moment of a crisis that we're able to access it. So if it's too complicated, it'll never, it'll never be usable. So rather than taking the approach of making it too complex for anyone to remember or actually utilize in the case they need it, I think our stance is more of educating people, like, building awareness around, if you hit these four keys, this is going to happen, so know it's there and don't do it if you don't mean to. I think we'd rather have the accidental things that we can correctly fix than to need it in emergency and not be able to utilize it. So we have to keep it simple so it can be utilized and educate people to know that it's there and how to use it properly.
So that'll be able to happen from every phone?
Every phone, yes. Every phone, yeah.
And that's, that's a lockdown, that, I don't want, I don't want to overshare, but that's either like a magnet or something that locks all the doors.
Yes, see, all, all doors are locked. No, 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 but the doors it's going to lock are, our classroom doors are primarily locked during the day anyway, or they have the push button for the teachers quickly to be able to lock it. What, and correct me if I'm wrong, what the, what it does is it disables the card swipes outside the building, so people can't accidentally enter a building that's in lockdown. We have lights that go off that notify people, and I don't know if it's programmed now, but I know we could program it to give an automated message over the PA speakers or even over the phone speakers.
It's programmed now, yeah.
It's an external lockdown, it's not an internal lockdown.
Right, external doors, yeah.
But I know when they came in, the audit, that, you know, there was talk of the panic button, or that could shut down all classroom doors.
Yeah, our classrooms aren't currently wired to the access control system, so it would really just be the exterior doors.
Okay.
And your note, it, it also includes a notification to the central office, like, or does it end at the building where it happens?
It currently sounds an audible alert that says that it's a lockdown.
Okay.
It does not call out to the police.
Okay.
The SWAT team won't show up if an accidental head.
Okay, all right. Good, I'm glad. Sounds good. Yep.
As part of the equipment, and I don't know where this stands, because it's very much on a micro level, so the e-gaming esports that was being proposed a year ago, or maybe it was a year and a half ago, is that part of this, or is that not moving forward? The club that, that, that middle school group was looking to?
Yep, so the esports club is up and running this year. They're currently coming up with fundraising ideas so they can fundraise money to purchase equipment to use in school. I think right now, they're utilizing, we may have bought a couple systems for them, but some of the students were bringing theirs back and forth to be able to utilize them. So, but yeah, they have some, some fundraising ideas coming up, because they want to build their, their equipment base. They had, I don't know if it's, if it's scheduled or where it is in the process, but I know they were considering using the PAC as, to host the tournament and to charge an entry fee and allow students to come in and use sort of the screen of the PAC to participate in a large-scale gaming. So that's currently underway, and I think there's a great deal of interest, the students, and we could certainly invite them back in to, to give an update of what they've done since they were listed here.
Is that built into technology budget, or is that?
No.
That's extracurricular?
Extracurricular, like any other club, yeah.
Now, I don't know if you've gotten to this detail yet, but are you stating you're rolling up your budget year to year, or are there increase?
Well, we don't have the-
What's your enhancements do you see going forward, or you're looking for for next year?
Well, in terms of the budget numbers, we haven't gotten the, the RIC's estimates as to what their numbers would be, so it probably wouldn't be a direct rollover, but we'll have, we'll have to wait to see what their numbers come back as.
The biggest driving factor in the technology budget is our contractual expenses through Bosse's. Bosse's hasn't yet issued their RFS, Request for Services, for next school year, so we don't know those numbers. We know as their contracts go up, they pass those expenses through to us, but in terms of our internal cost controls, staffing being the most obvious one, there's no increase, other than the otherwise contractual increases for staffing for technology, and then really, equipment-wise, there's really, there's no big-ticket items that are coming out of the equipment budget. So it's really just whatever our Bosse's expenses are. But there's no, there's no new program, new system, there's no, it's just going to be whatever contractual increases come through Bosse's.
So is there still equipment that's part of the money coming through the SmartBond?
We, we spent all the-
Or is that done?
Right, no, well, the, the SmartBond money, we still have, I think somewhere around $200,000 of that left, but what we did do was, we spent the money that we applied to, to spend. So anything, so any project that we set out to do and to spend that amount of money, we've gotten that money and completed those projects.
And then you had said that the savings from doing Chromebooks versus MacBooks is going towards, and you're saying infrastructure, that's for the, the new buildings?
Yeah, so the money that we normally would have spent getting the MacBooks, which we're just totally not going to get this year, that would go toward the new construction and the renovation projects.
Right, so our goal is to, if we can fund our technology needs for the facilities project through the technology budget within the existing IPA budgets of the years past, that we won't see any drastic change in our overall budget from year to year.
Which had to do, you know, once the buildings are up, you still have things to do with those buildings.
Right, we have to outfit the rooms with displays and stuff like that. Everything outside of the wall is not part of the facilities project, so we have to be able to furnish those rooms, and that's one way in which we hope to furnish the rooms without increasing our expenditures from our general budget.
The website and the app, the app, what enhancements do you think will be made over the next year on that? Do you have anything in mind that? I know you did a lot recently on the website itself, but the app, anything that's going on there? Two questions. And if I see something within the app or the website, who's, who's in charge of that? That I never know.
Well, I certainly would oversee all of that, but today, I was in fact working with Alex Goffman on getting certain items, and we just noticed this today, certain items on the app itself doesn't refresh as often as we'd like. So that's something that we're going to be actually working on tomorrow. Now, as with the website, we're going to keep trying to make that more and more accessible. Now, by accessible, I mean, keep increasing our accessibility score for those with like visual or audio impairments. So that's, that's the current, that's the plan for this year.
And is Alex in charge of the?
Alex is the webmaster, yeah.
Okay. So if there's anything that's out, out of date, it goes to Alex to communicate this down? Okay.
I just want to compliment the, all the members at the Technology Department, having been Technology Director for many years. I know, like any service industry, most of the feedback they get is when stuff's not working. Rarely do they get a phone call, hey, just want to let you know, my computer started perfectly this morning. this morning. Or I went to check my email and it popped up on my computer, so thank you for making that happen. So I just wanted to publicly recognize, I know they're very much unsung heroes behind the curtain there and, or in some cases above the ceiling tiles or behind the walls or under the tables. So I just want to recognize, I know they all work very hard, and having seen technology and how well it operates in multiple districts, I, I think they do a tremendous job and our uptime has to be nearly a hundred percent. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right, so now I'm going to introduce, Dave Spittle's going to talk a little bit about transportation. As the members of the board and maybe the members of public are aware, our current contract with Orange County Transit is up at the end of this school year. And Dave's just going to take an opportunity, it's not really a presentation per se, but just to have a conversation with the board regarding, one, an audit in which we had an outside consultant conduct on our transportation system, and then our recommendations moving forward, and really just an opportunity to have a discussion. They're all yours, Dave.
Hello. Before I get started, I want to thank Mike, it was a great presentation, Mike. And it's great to work with the technology department. I work, we work hand in hand with them on a daily basis, so. And the, the only good budget meeting about the capital project I've had in the last six months, it was when Michael offered up the I P A as a way to pay for the technology aspect of the capital project. And on, on that note, I'm going to keep my cap, my, my facilities hat on for one more minute, that tonight at 5:30, the capital project was posted to go out to bid. So to everyone out there, please tell friends, anybody, family that is in the construction business, that we have an exciting project here. And it's not just one large project, it's divided up into three projects so that, you know, some company without the capacity to do such a large project we have here can bid on just the elementary school piece, or, or a company that, that does prefabricated buildings can just bid on the wellness center and, and such. So it's, I just want to put that word out there because we're, we, we need to get a lot of interest in bids on this project, so. Oh, right, thank you, Jeannie. You can go on our website and there's, there's a link to all the specifications for the project there. And you can, you can also pick, pick up the, can you pick them up yet, the packages at the, at the district office?
You don't have to.
It's just online now, okay.
Right.
Okay, it's on the?
District info and then bid info.
District, click district info and then bid info.
So David, that means that, that our third-party review process for state ed, it's been approved?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's why I would announce, I'm sorry, I'm so close to it. The, that's why I wanted to announce that, that this is a whole new stage we're finally entering. We've been waiting for this for, for a year and a half, that we've, we were done with that. It's been approved at the state and now it's, we've done a little polishing up of the, the scope of the project to make sure, to give us our best chance of getting a positive result on the bids.
And what's our time period for when people should be asked to bid or when they do back, I should say?
We're going to have a contractors' meeting, I believe, on January fifteenth, I believe, or nineteenth? What day is it? It's in the middle of January. It's very soon. But then we're going to be, the, the bid openings are going to be in the first week in February, so it's, it's a kind of a, and that's the, that's the, the day we're all waiting for. So, you know, we're going to be crossing our fingers and holding our breath that we, we get a, a positive result in February when we open those bids.
And Dave, I'm going to assume that when you said we pol, you polished up the proposals a little bit, it incorporated a lot of the recommendations that our architects talked about. Was it our last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the high cost of steel and all those ways to go in there ready?
Yeah, that's right. There was a lot of negotiating back and forth and, and it was, you know, but we, we think after the polishing, we're still maintaining, you know, the, the essence of the project and, and the project. And we've done some, you know, they, they did a good job representing the value engineering, but then there, behind the scenes, there was, there was, you know, tussling to make sure that we get, we get a great project at the end of the day here, that, that it wasn't, the scope wasn't reduced to the point where, that's not what you guys showed me, you know? So it's going to, it's going to be what, what we showed everybody when the bond was passed, so.
So the site meeting is on January fifteenth.
Same, I was right. So happy to answer any more questions on, on that, but putting my transportation director's hat on, here to, to recommend that the board renew our, our transportation contract with Orange County Transit for one more year. And you might ask why? Because a year ago, we were actively attempting to replace this company and thinking about going out for R F P. And so I'm going to just give you a little history and, and, and what's been going on and why that's my recommendation. You know, Orange County's service failures last year were, were well-known. You know, in the beginning of last year, we had changed the, you know, the later start times, so all of our, our students were, were in the high school, middle school, were coming in and leaving together, which added several bus runs. And they, as you, you know, you, the board voted to have that happen and it was plenty of notice, and, and when the, the company showed up here in September, they were not prepared to handle those additional runs. They, they didn't have the resources from a bus driver's standpoint to handle them, so they were scrambling to keep our service up. They were bringing in drivers from Long Island who didn't know the routes and they didn't know the Putnam Valley roads. The roads in Long Island are very different than they are around here, as you all know. And, and so we, and they, they, they didn't have enough drivers for the routes and they didn't have sub-drivers, and very often their dispatchers weren't, weren't here because they're out driving or, or at another facility. And also the athletic runs weren't, they weren't able to fulfill those either. They would often tell us at the last minute, they couldn't deliver our athletes to a contest, and so we had to scramble to, to find another bus company to actually get our, get our kids to and from. So, you know, how did we handle this? Our, our team was asked or forced to do yeoman's work to keep a basic level of safety and service for our students. You know, Lori Cara down there worked double shifts for over a year. Michael was out, Michael Koenig was, was working day and night, I don't know if the guy sleeps, but he, he was filling in for their lack of service so often and driving and dispatching that he, he got the nickname Montoc Mike because he was doing their work. And so, and the athletic department, I, I should say, you know, they took on this after-school sports transportation as, as another job that they're not used to doing, scrambling to get buses to deliver the kids. So it was really, really tough, and that's, that's when, you know, Dr. Wills and Dr. Luft and, 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 and Jill were really, really under, we, we felt we needed to do something. So that's why we, we were very upset last year at this time, to say the least. So, and besides, besides those, those folks I just mentioned, the, the real thing that got us through was the dedicated and caring of our actual drivers, not just our drivers for Putnam Valley, but, but the drivers who are a lot of local folks who work for East, for, I'm sorry, Orange County Transit. And they, they helped and they stepped up whenever they could because they really do care about the safety of, of our students and, and getting them to and from. So what did we do to improve the situation? Well, we, we brought in a temp, a part-time worker down in the office, Yvonne Mazza, who helped to do dispatching because Michael and Lori were always out doing runs, and they weren't able to dispatch, or they were dispatching for, for Orange County. And she also was able to document the Orange County's service failures, and so we were able to then take those service failures to, to Orange County and at one point even fine them for their lack of service based on the contract. We had weekly meetings with the owner, John Minch, and the management of Orange County to hold them accountable and, and to start build, building a sense of trust between our district and their company to try to, because we were all working towards the same goal. They, they really did want, want to solve this problem, they weren't ignoring it, and, and they did work, work with us, but it was a big problem. We also hired a consultant to examine our hybrid system and, for safety and fiscal responsibility as we contemplated going out for an R F P for services. And I must say, throughout the entire difficult situation, Orange, Orange County was cooperative, and it seemed genuinely, genuinely surprised at their inability to attract and maintain their staff. During the year, they held job fairs, they advertised enough to slowly build their staff back so that, so that the end of the year, we were in much better shape. And, and this year, over the summer, after the summer of more jobs and recruiting, O C was able to, to start this year, this, this school year, in, I want to say night and day, but, but much, much better shape. You know, so the, they, they continued to respond positively to the, to the ideas that we had for safety, and they had enough drivers for all of our runs, they had substitute drivers here, they had dispatchers here. It took a lot of pressure off of our district's organization and the, from the athletic department through our transportation department. We had far, very rarely do we have a service failure. And so, you know, it was painful, but I, I want to just tell you that, that it's, it's a lot better now. And it's, and, and it's, all of the, the pain was worth it. It, it worked, and, and these guys are, are doing a much better job now. So, and so, but besides the level of service which has improved, I'm not saying it's perfect, and we're going to have problems, transportation always does, and, and we're, we're driving every day. I mean, I don't know if you can see some of the changes we make every day to make us more efficient, safer, and they are responding, and, and, and we're, we're really running a much smoother operation here. But besides that, when we hired our, that transportation consultant, he, he, you know, he looked at our whole, our whole transportation hybrid system that we have, where we have district-owned buses and employees and we have contracted out, and, and he, his report back to us was that we have a very efficient system here, and it's working very well. And not only that, but it's cost-effective. And in his, his expertise is in transportation, and, and he, he basically warned us that if, you know, if we go out for an R F P, you're, you're going to realize between a ten and twenty percent increase in our costs for the district, which, for transportation, which, which amounts to between two and $400,000, which is going to be painful for our district. So there is a, a financial component to the decision as well. So, and then there's the, the other thing we thought about when we were discussing this, at, you know, we discussed it a lot in the last several months, is that if we go out for an R F P to look for a new company, we're not, we're not sure what we're going to get, you know? And, you know, it's, it's not the devil we know, but we've, we've, we're working well with these folks now, and to start over with another company, we don't know what we're going to get. It is, there is a nationwide shortage of drivers. All companies are having a hard time getting drivers to, you know, for, for buses. And so that, you know, that's not an excuse for last year, but, but that's, that's the reality, and, and that's one of the reasons why the, the price would go up on an R F P is because it's very difficult to get drivers, so. And, and then I, one, just one more piece and I'll answer any questions you have, is that I do, I have built relationships with the drivers out here for both, for both our, our district and, and Orange County, and, and I, I've talked to them, and they're, you know, they know things are going on, we're looking, you know, and they're asking me, and they, they want, they want to drive for Orange County, and they are happy. They're, they weren't as happy a year ago, because nobody wants to work for an organization that feels like it's not doing well. But they're, they're happy now, and they, they really, you know, like driving for this company and want to work for us. So, so that's another reason that I'd like to, I'd like to keep them for another year. And, and when we do roll the contract over, we, we have built into the contract the fact that it's, it's rolled over at just a C P I, so we're going to have a very minor increase rather than the two or, or $400,000 increase in, in, in our transportation costs, so. Any questions?
Well, I know, Dave, that we received the consultant's report, and our costs are significantly lower and, and very, very cost-effective compared to comparable districts in the area. So an increase would be tremendous. It sounds like a lot of the issues, there, there, I, I remember the number of meetings last year as superintendent hours. Are you and Dr. Luft confident that safety issues have been addressed? That certainly there were, shall we say, annoyances and difficulties on the part of staff, but we always have to balance fiscal with what's best for children, and what's best for children always, safety comes first. So can you talk about that? It doesn't sound like there were safety issues, but?
Well, you know, the, the issues, you know, we take safety like incredibly, incredibly seriously. I mean, that's the number one thing we think about day and night. I, I'm, I'm never at ease until all of our children are, are delivered back home at the end of the day. And so we didn't lose safety last year. It was more operational issues. And, you know, it, that, you know, there's no guarantees, but, you know, it, I think it starts with the, with now having, you know, well-trained and qualified drivers who really care. And, and you, you can tell out there, that, that's where, they're on the front lines of safety for the kids. As far as the other safety of the buses, of course, you know, that, that, that gets checked by the state and, and those are safe, and, and then it's the person behind the wheel who are, and they're well-trained and, and they care. They, they want to keep our kids safe, and, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I don't think there's any aspect of transportation that doesn't somehow affect student safety, right? So whether it be operational, personnel, equipment, right, there's always some impact or, on student safety. But in terms of student safety and reckless driving or unsafe equipment or accidents and things of the such, yes, I mean, is it possible we're going to have an accident here and there when all those buses are out on the roads? It's going to happen, and it happens in every district, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's thankfully minor. But in terms of the real profound safety issues, that was really, to Dave's point, never our issue. It was more personnel-related, operational problems, procedural problems than it was ever safety problems.
And that's why, you know, when I talked about Mike and Lori out there, I mean, that we, we made sure, they, they had to fill in for, for their, the, the issues that we had so that we, we didn't have any risk of, of a safety issue. Anything else?
Do you have anything else? No? Okay. And this would be for a one-year rollover at essentially the same-
That's what we're looking at.
The same contract, but with the C P I. And that does, just to, I want to say hedge our bets, but just for protection and safety net, you did mention that there were fines, that's built into the contract, that if there is service-
Yeah, and, 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 and again, I, I don't want to, the, the owner has been very cooperative with us. It's not like, and we have a, it wasn't a great relationship last year, we have a much better relationship, and, but, but he's agreed to even look at the contract to make some tweaks to it, and, and one of those tweaks was to, to possibly increase those fines. But, but we're, you know, we hope to never have to break that.
Right, we don't want, we don't want to get the fines. We don't want any service disruptions.
That's not what we're looking at, no, no.
Exactly, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is there PTA, PTSA representative?
Any representatives from anywhere?
There's a superintendent and he can give us our superintendent report.
Is that in the solution?
Yes, and yourself.
Good evening, everyone. As everyone's aware, we're currently within our budget development process, so we've been meeting in person, Ms. Figarela and myself, with departments and buildings to talk about our development process, budget development process. So this evening was the first presentation by the technology department. On our original calendar, we had the high school scheduled to go tonight, but in conversations with Dr. Cherry, the high school is the most complex building to schedule. Really, it would have been premature to have a presentation about a high school budget before the schedule's built and, you know, staffing and programs and course selection. So that's all happening now. So that's, that was the reason why we detoured from our original plan. So now the high school will happen later within the process, but still they'll be here to present their budget for the following year. I had the opportunity to attend a NISCUS diversity inclusivity workshop and it was, it was really eye-opening experience. There was superintendents from throughout the state present. I ran into colleagues from Long Island and upstate New York and just wanted to share some of the topics. It talked about the defining the purpose and the importance of the work, the educator diversity playbook, developing equitable and inclusive schools and classrooms and creating inclusive school communities. So it just wanted to share that it was, it was a tremendous opportunity. It's always a little humbling to go away and to hear other people. We're always our own worst critics and then when you hear what other school districts are doing, I'm like, oh yeah, we do that, oh yeah, we do that, we do that, we do that pretty well. So it was a great experience and I shared some resources with my colleagues that I took away from it, but I wanted to share that that was something we did. Much less exciting was we recently completed a Title I desk review audit of our Title I. Dr. Doherty and Jeanette Vashetter were instrumental in getting this done. I'm not sure I've ever jumped through so many hoops in my entire life, but it's, it's done and we're hopeful that we don't have to do it again for another couple of years. We're currently looking at our middle school science curriculum. We've had a consultant come in, we've met with our middle school teachers, with our high school teachers, with administration, and we're considering making pretty serious changes to our middle school science program. So I would just encourage everyone who is interested to just to follow up on the board agendas, we'll be doing a full presentation on what our proposed science curriculum looks like moving forward and the rationale behind that. We filmed another edition of Inside Putnam Valley Schools. This was our holiday edition, really focused a lot on the man behind the curtain, Daniel Mahoney, in the TV studio. We had some students present, actually the students themselves participated in the filming. We did the filming of the session within the TV studio using their equipment and the students had an opportunity to talk a little bit about the film class and the, using the equipment within the TV studio. So it's very exciting. We had Columbia College here working with our English teachers on a writing unit and speaking with the teachers afterwards. They said it was an amazing experience and they took lots of strategies away to share with our students and really what the focus is on how, is getting high school-age students to create and hopefully publish articles. And that's something that we're working towards. I know one of our teachers, Adele Foster, had gotten a grant through Columbia and that's really what precipitated this work. So it was, they got great reviews and I'm looking forward to seeing it translate into our classrooms. Recently attended another CSA meeting, so Chief School Administrators Meeting for Parton Northern Westchester Bosse's where we talked about a variety of issues, the first and foremost being budget development process and sharing sort of a region-wide concerns regarding the, the influence of the state tax levy cap on school districts and the long-term feasibility of districts to operate within those caps. So obviously something that we pay very close attention to, but it's, it was nice to hear that other districts around the region are struggling with the same issues. As Dave just mentioned, we had another meeting with Orange County Transit, our bus company, and that was sort of what brought us here today in sharing our, the recommendation to renew for another year. Our internal audit auditor will be here, I'm sure, soon to share the results of our internal audit, but they were meeting with all district administrators and business office personnel recently. I've actually had several very productive parent meetings. It's not, I don't always get to meet directly with the parents. It's not always under the best circumstances when I have an opportunity to meet with parents, but I did have two very productive parent meetings within the last couple of weeks and it's just always great to have the opportunity to sit down and collectively problem solve is really what I think the best way to describe those meetings are. As, just a quick update, we talked, we spoke a little bit about the need for the voting machines. So what we've done, the districts in Putnam County have reached an agreement with a vendor to rent machines for this May. As of right now, they're saying this is only going to be an issue once every four years during presidential primary seasons. I'm not necessarily convinced, but it's going to cost us, as we expected, approximately $7,000 in additional costs. And this is because Putnam County can no longer share their voting machines with us because their voting machines will still be used for the primary. So we're forced to rent machines, which is an expense we certainly never had before. Right before this meeting, we hosted a superintendent's listening hour, a couple of parents attended and some of the topics we discussed were tracking of students and, and the long-term implications for our IB program at the high school, our kindergarten Mandarin program. And we have our Chinese New Year celebration coming up on January 23rd, I believe is the date, with our kindergarten parents coming in, getting a sort of a glimpse of that program. And a little bit about testing anxiety, which we ran out of time on. Just a couple of quick events that have happened recently, middle school concerts, both band and chorus concerts were excellent. The elementary school holiday sing-along is a sight to be seen, earplugs recommended. I do want a, a high school band concert, it was actually last night. I'm amazed that high school students can produce that level of music. And I did want to acknowledge our own basketball star, Kelly scored her 1,000th point. I know we had a picture on the screen before, but the gym was packed and it was really a true celebration. Apparently she didn't know, I'm not sure I'm buying it, but it was, it was a great opportunity and as far as I'm concerned, one of our finest student athletes, so I was very happy for her. That's it. Thank you.
I don't think she knew it because she kept playing when everyone else started to jump on her, so.
And didn't I hear that she thought it was 30, she knew it was coming up, she thought she had 30 more points and it was 3.
It was actually 3, right.
That's lovely. Yeah. And she's so gracious about it. Okay, like to open it up to public comment on any of the agenda items?
I have to...
I was going to open it up to the board right now. Go right ahead.
Sorry. Jeremy, it's a part of Michael's presentation was talking about the automation of the notifications of dropping and it kind of stood out to me and maybe I've just mis, misheard it and it wasn't a question for him, but for you. The process seemed to be that there'd be notification to parents and to teachers about the drop, but it, their notification or messaging of intention prior to that, because it sounds as though parents are going to get notified that their student has decided to drop something and it didn't really seem that there was a consultation period before that. I don't know if you have the answer for that now, but it'd be good to know that there is an information loop and it's not like a student can actually decide that for themselves when they're not eating.
So, so I can't speak to the exact logistics of the system, but I can speak to the purpose of the system was to prevent exactly that. So what was happening in the past was it was fairly easy for students to come in, meet with their guidance counselor, drop a class, and there was no notification system to the parents and parents were finding out after the fact. So the purpose of the system was to put communications in place to inform parents. I think my quick answer is it's never too late, right? To take, to not drop the class, right? Even if they dropped the class and the parent calls and meet with the student, we could always put the student back in the class. So, but the intention of the system is to keep parents in the loop. At the end of the day, we don't want students dropping classes unless they're picking up a class in its place. And that, that was the important message we thought we needed to get across.
And it seemed to me that there'd be a protocol in place that the email is launched and then it's like a week holding period until it's actually in effect. That way there is that time built in and the email says there, unless there is some change, this will be in, in place within seven to 10 days or whatever it is. I mean, it just seems like, and I have no idea what that protocol is, but it just seems that that would be something better than, still you're finding out, but they've already intended and I think that might cause kind of a rift between parent and student if it's like you're, you know, the guidance counselor tells you that that's apparent, they're dropping and maybe the student never, ever said anything to the parent that they were intending to do that. It just seems that it might be a better, or there might be a protocol if it's not in place that might be, you know, I'm not the professional, it just seems like as a parent, if I found out that my, my child had dropped something and wasn't as though, it was an information that the child intends to drop, it's a different story.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, on the agenda items, or anything else? Then let us move right to new business and Ms. Farrel, I'd like you to start us off with number one.
Resolved on recommendation, superintendent of schools that the board appoints Prama Linda Pregiato to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant on step one, prorated of the CSEA salary schedule commencing on January 13th, 2020 and terminating on January 12th, 2024 in the teaching assistant tenure area and in accordance with PVSD policy 9250. Ms. Pregiato holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Lana Green as a 10-week long-term substitute special education math teacher at the high school effective January 13th, 2020 through on or about April 1st, 2020 or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education at the salary, I'm sorry, at the substitute salary rate of $125 per day. Ms. Green's rate of pay will be increased to $150 per day upon issuance of her certification in Students with Disability 7-12 Mathematics anticipation by February 1st, 2020.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to note that this is a leave replacement position for Liz Rom, who actually had her baby this morning. So the timing is perfect.
Welcome, baby. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And we've added that, there's no reason for it other than the acoustics in this room and we want to make sure that if somebody does, it isn't an assumption, so. I've been going to other board meetings and watching how other people do things, so. Moving on...
Are you doing a scouting report?
I'm doing, I'm scouting, I'm scouting process. Moving on to number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Mary Ann Rainieri to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective January 14th, 2020 with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, March 10th, 2020, and a maximum of 52 weeks, January 14th, 2021, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to amend the December 12th, 2019 appointment of Lindsay Edwards as follows. Resolved to appoint Lindsay Edwards to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on January 4th, 2020 and terminating on January 3rd, 2024 in the teaching assistant tenure area on step one of the CSEA salary schedule. Ms. Edwards holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? I'm not entirely sure we're going to do this, so I, I, it's not rolling off my tongue easily. This is a, this is just an experiment. Thank you. Thank you. For bearing with us. This is, we're very, very transparent on the board, even in terms of our processes.
Except that there was a good example right there where I didn't say yay.
I heard you say yay.
But I tripped over and maybe it didn't get heard and maybe then I would have had a different opinion, that's all.
Moving right along. Where are we? We're at number five.
Five.
That's what I thought. Number five.
Be it resolved pursuant to sections 3031 and 3019A, the education law upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the board hereby terminates the probationary appointment of Penny Wallack as a teaching assistant in the teaching assistant tenure area in the district effective the close of business February 10th, 2020 and be it further resolved that the board hereby directs the board clerk to notify the employee that her employment in the district as a probationary teaching assistant shall terminate on the above date.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Going to finish the whole meeting out one way. Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an overnight trip on January 24th, 2020 for high school science research students to attend a competition at Burnt Hills, Boston Lake High School in Boston, New York.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Number seven.
Resolved to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into an agreement with Partners in Safety, Inc. for school bus driver physicals and drug and alcohol testing for 2020 as per document number 112/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Is this new?
No. I can move the mic down so I'll make sure. I just wanted to point out, this is a renewal of a contract. We actually already, we upped it in July, but the contract was up in January. So this is a renewal of a contract that's been in place for many, many years and is in no way reactive to...
Current events.
Current events.
In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Moving on to the conges, consent?
No, you want to do number eight.
Oh, I would like to do number eight. You're right. I like that one. Number, number eight.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the facilities and building use rates as per document, as per document 115/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Moving on now to the conges, consent agenda. Number one.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items two through eight as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving a health and welfare, welfare contract with Howland Central School District for one of our students with special needs, which they're going to be servicing. We're approving a budget transfers among various budget items, moving money around. So we're covering the costs of some reviews from capital project, we're moving money from social security, we're transferring some money from IB diploma to other areas and it goes on like that. We're approving additions for three substitute teachers. We're approving additions of six hours for two staff members to work on the bilingual programs and two teachers to administer work language speaking exams. We're approving educational contracts with the East Chester School District for one of our students with special needs who will be attending their school. We're approving, where is it? Three middle school advisory roles, two for testing and one to be the leader of the encores. And we're mending an agreement with the West Chester Institute of Human Development for assistance in technology evaluations and training.
Question, that was the questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Let's move on to public comment by anyone or anyone on the board on any topic.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. You all got the chalkboard from West Chester Putnam School Boards Association today, I think. I am planning on going to the advocacy meeting on Monday, January 13th at Briar Cliff Manor if anybody wanted to come. Where they'll talk about the upcoming legislative forum, so I'll be going to that. I'm also going to attend the January 30th legislative forum, meeting with legislators face to face, which would be January 30th. Happy birthday to me. What a good way to spend your birthday.
Well, bring a cake, Bob.
Yeah. The other thing, it said at the very end, it said save the date. Their, West Chester Putnam School Boards Association hosts a breakfast every year. This year, the topic is school smart time, the wise and hows of starting the school day later. It's February 13th at 8:00 a.m. West Chester-Putnam School Boards Association hosts a breakfast every year. This year, the topic is school smart time, the wise and how's of starting the school day later. It's February 13th at 8:00 a.m. Sandy is on the panel. She has already agreed. They are thrilled to have an administrator who has both studied this issue and lived it, implemented in her district. I think she'll be great. I'm hoping that more than just one Putnam Valley person goes, just to support her. And I think she'll be great at, at...
Barbara, that's the 13th?
February 13th. It's 8:00 to 9:45 in the morning, so... We haven't gotten like the invitation for it yet, but it'll, it'll be coming. So, but I'm just, save the date, I think. And I'm, and I'm glad that Putnam Valley people are getting out there. Okay, that's it.
Okay. All right. So I'd like now, if there is no, nothing else, I would like, so many things.
I would like...
What would you like to do? So many things. But I would like to, a motion to adjourn the work session business meeting? No.
No.
No. To re, I would like a motion to reconvene the executive session for the purposes of one matter of the history, medical, financial, or credit, and one matter of the employment history of a particular person, and to discuss matters made exempt under fed, one matter made exempt under federal law, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.